Sounds good, though, all right.
All right, it's seven o'clock at this time here. I'd like to call to order the Coventry zoning board review. And I'd like to point out that fire exits are to your rear, two exits to our rear. These exits take you into the building. The ones to my rear take you through the zoning. The exits are to your rear for fire.
Sir, can you turn your mic off?
Okay. How am I doing now? Okay, thank you. Okay, also, at this time here, I'd like to have a roll call, please. I guess not.
You're gonna have to wait a second. Do you want me to do the roll call?
No, it's all right, I'm gonna have-
Roll call. And Ian Hattie?
Yes.
Russ Lackley?
Present.
Lanny Joey?
Present.
Keith Kudia?
Here.
Michael New?
Present.
Denise DeGrade? She is not here this evening. And Chairman Crowe?
Yeah.
Okay, we're missing one member this evening.
Uh, that's correct. So we can still, we still have five people to, uh, actually, we have six members to conduct business. Okay, um, has everybody had a chance to review the zoning board of, uh, let's see, you know, zoning board minutes of June 2nd, 2021? I have a motion to approve if it's been, uh, everybody's been able to observe it.
So move.
Uh, okay, uh, motion is made, move. Uh, do I have a second? Lanny, you're gonna second it? Okay, Keith made the motion. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Okay, uh, roll call's been taken, we've done the, uh, fire exits, and now at this time here, I'd like to open up with, uh, ratifications. Okay, we had the application of Walter Balkan of Sussex Plot Map 318, Lot 59, 10 acres of Pine Road, Zone RR2. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and special use permit to remove existing family dwelling and protect the same using an existing foundation. Uh, do I have a motion to ratify that decision from last month? From board?
Ratify.
Ed's made the motion. Keith seconded that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Okay, the next application we have is Bryant Mattson. Application 17, Lot 61, 1580, Hill Farm Road, Zone RR20. Application is seeking a special use permit to conserve a garage in the front yard. Uh, this was heard again last month, and do I have a, uh, motion to ratify this application?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Keith, seconded by Lanny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Eyes have it. Okay, uh, we don't have to do a ratification on that, uh-
Pasca?
Yeah, Pasca.
I believe you do.
Oh, we do? That was, uh, that was the notice of order keeping with the-
That was an, that was the appeal of-
Appeal.
Zoning Enforcement Office decision. And you wrote a decision on that.
That's correct.
That should be ratified.
I, I did, yeah, that should be ratified.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Pasca, uh, Sussex Plot Map 329, Lot 55, 27 Casey Lane. Appeal of zoning enforcement's officers' notice of order stating and keeping of the applicants-
Apaca.
Apaca?
Alpacas.
Alpacas, I'm sorry, is not permitted. Okay, uh, that was voted on last month, and do I have a motion to, uh, ratify that decision from the board?
So.
Keith made the motion?
Second.
Lanny seconded that. All those in favor of, uh, the enforcement of the officer's notice of order? All those say aye?
Aye.
Uh, any nays? Okay, eyes have it. Okay, old business. Okay, uh-
Mr. Chairman, um, before we start the old business, I'd like to make an announcement for the new business. The applicant of Anthony Oriano needs to be continued due to a noticing issue. It will be, um, heard on September's meeting.
What's the date of that September meeting?
September 1st, 2021.
Okay, and, uh, is there any other ones that's not gonna be heard tonight?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, let's start right off at the beginning here then of the first application. Robert Krugan? Krugan. Uh, Sussex Plot Map 57, Lot 460 Raymond's Point Road. Can you read that application into the record?
Owner applicant is Robert Krugan. The location is AP 57, Lot 460 Raymond's Point Road. Zone is RR2. Applicant is seeking a special use permit and a dimensional variance to remove and replace an existing single-family home 45 feet from the rear property line where 90 feet is required.
Okay, uh, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have an attorney with you?
Chairman, are you gonna recuse yourself on this?
Yes, I am, but I'm-
You should be, do it right now before you can stop.
Okay, all right. Uh, since I am a resident by you, I will excuse myself from this application, and I'm gonna turn, uh, Denise is not here, she's vice chairman, to Russ, and Russ is gonna handle this application.
Okay. Sir, do you have, do you have an attorney with you tonight? Uh, normally, um, because this is, uh, a, uh, like a condo association, then normally the, you've got, you have a letter from your covenant association?
I did, I did.
Okay, and you weren't notified that you needed a, that you needed a lawyer?
It was going back and forth, and so it was- Who told you that? Uh, between Coventry Survey and, I believe it was one of them to go back and talk about the property.
I would never trust anybody.
I, I'm gonna defer to legal counsel for an opinion as to whether he feels he needs to be represented by an attorney. Um, this is the letter? This, have you seen the letter from the condo association?
Is it in packet?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, if I may, Mr. Chair, the, um, the letter that's in the packet from the Flat River Condo Association Covenant Committee indicates that, uh, the applicant of Mr. Krugan has appeared before the Covenant Committee for approval, um, regarding the layout, the proposed footprint and placement of his new structure as, and the setback of the structure at Unit 61. And the Covenant Committee has approved the 10-foot setback. Um, that, this, it goes on to say, this is an approval of the setback only and not an approval of the structure itself. Um, I think that's because this board is the, uh, body that has to approve that.
And at a later date, they did it through, once I had the plans, uh, except for all of them here, that they weren't even, they were accused while I was doing the main part of the whole committee.
In the past, um, any, any type of condo association, normally, they would come in with a letter from the, from the Covenant Association or committee, and they'd also be represented by counsel. Uh, it's just the way we've done it in the past, and it was my opinion that was the way it was supposed to be done because it's, it's, it's a, an entity by itself, it's not really, you really, you all belong to it, but you don't really own a piece of it, so they, they always have had counsel of, in the past.
It's, it's been the practice of this board, as I understand it, consistent with what the chair has stated, to, to require applicants come bef, that are in condo associations, come before the board, uh, with representation. I do note that this letter is dated February 3rd. Mr. Krugan seems to suggest that there was a subsequent approval or a subsequent review of the material of the, of the building plans. Um, and I, I, I'm just looking in the packet, I, I don't see that updated letter.
Something to me consisted of all West, pretty much lived actually right next to me, but then also, uh, having others that went and walked through it, they would be quite a lot of plans, and, uh, proved everything, what's real, and then we got, we're going, it started off, we didn't do too much, so we're going with a few months, maybe it was a dozen years, and most of the stuff has been used by Coventry Survey for, uh, pre-survey and this operation itself.
Did we get approval from the planning board? Favorite recommendation from them?
Yes, we did. Uh, the committee put in their recommendation. Yes. That's what I'm thinking. Um- I'm pretty positive I could get a, uh, while I guess it's not, uh, well-
Well, we, we historically try to button up any possible loopholes that might happen or something that might fall through the cracks because we didn't follow a letter of law like we normally do, and that's, so before we got going that far, it doesn't make any sense to do anything unless we're on the right path to start with, and, uh, I'm looking at guidance from a planner and our solicitor, so, so it's, it's new to me.
Yeah, um, I, just a couple of comments, really, and, um, I understand the applicant is here this evening. I also understand that the expectation and the history of this board has been that when applicants come before the board, especially within condo associations, the board has, um, required or expected that they appear before counsel. As a, as a legal counsel myself, I find it, I, I don't wanna say, and I, I don't think it's appropriate for me to say that, well, you know, you should get a, you should get a lawyer, but the board is, the board is saying that, that's been the board's practice, that is a matter of record, it's not just me saying it, the, you know, you, you reflected that. My only concern, frankly, is relative to this, this letter dated February 3rd. I mean, it's, it's great that they have the recommendation from the planning commission, obviously, that's a, that's a requirement in the, in the, in the approval process. Um, my concern is that we're looking at a letter dated February 3rd that indicates that there are additional steps that are gonna be required or additional approval steps required at the condo association. Um, I, obviously, Mr. Krugan has not been sworn this evening, but I take him at his word that he's gone through those processes with the condo association, but I don't know, I, I think we have to have a little bit more than his word, I think we have to have at least another written document reflecting that in order for the approval to take place if the board was inclined to grant the approval, so, um-
With all due respect, if I could have a few minutes or a few minutes, uh, I'm sure I have a bunch of emails that's been put on between Coventry Survey and my condo association Covenant Committee to address, um, the map, like a field with a lot, and all my, uh, I'm sure I can find in there, if I look for some emails, I may got something in there. There's been a lot of stuff going back and forth together, but it was one, maybe I could find another letter here and there.
I'm, I'm more inclined, and, and I, I know it's a hassle, but I'm more inclined to postpone it another month so you can get that information that's needed, but also get yourself a lawyer just to make sure that we're doing everything by the book. Uh, it, you know, you've got most of the paperwork that you need to have here, but the stumbling block is, in the past, without exception, we've always, if it comes to a condo situation, they owe, they, they come in with two pieces of paper, well, two things. A letter from the condo, from the Covenant Association, and they're represented by counsel. Uh, and unfortunately, you didn't get the, the right intel to tell you that you needed a, a counsel, and, um, I'd put it out to, uh, to the, to the board as to see how they felt about that one way or the other, whether we wanna proceed without a, without a lawyer or not. I'll entertain anything that wants to look towards that.
We're only gonna move it possibly, just move forward with the stipulation, and, and you guys are the maintenance, and keep doing it.
That, that's, that, that's my big stumbling block, I mean-
Seeing favor and, just keep- Because the attorney, yeah, I mean, I went back and forth with this, I'm sorry, I mean, the best I can, I need to talk to all these people back then, and they said, we were going in front of here, they, they cares a lot with, they said, they're being a condominium back to acres, we got a lot of time, and that said, back to that, very loyal, like you said, and that was under-
I'll certainly entertain a motion to, uh, to continue forward, and, uh, and it, it all based upon, uh, whether he has the right information to fu, to go forward, 'cause it's, it becomes a stipulation, just like we've done in the past.
Does he have that? It's just our-
Unfortunately, uh-
I mean, if it's at that point, then we have to say, you have to come back.
Unfortunately, we, I don't know that we have, um-
Is that a precedent we set years ago? Gonna follow?
I just know that this is the way we've always done it.
It's, it is the way the board has always handled these type of applications, um, you know, I-
Situation we're in now.
I, and I understand, and I, you know, I think the board has the, I think the board has the legal ability to move forward or, under the circumstances as have been described, but like the chair indicated, there would be a, at least a, if you move forward, there would be at least a condition, um, to, to provide written confirmation that the, uh, Covenant Committee of the condo association has in fact approved the specific design and layout. It may be as simple as just producing that document, but, um, you know, I-
Make a motion.
I mean, every, every case that comes before you is, is unique, and, you know, um, it, it has been your practice that's, that's well, that's well-known to the board members, it's well-known to staff, you know, um, I, I really can't get beyond that in terms of, you know, you have the ability-
Make a motion, huh?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we move forward on this matter, and under the condition of stipulation that he provides-
Upgrading of-
Yes, upgrading this letter with the final letter.
From the condo association on the, the actual, um, layout of what he wants to do with his property.
I believe I have, you said February 3rd?
February 3rd is the date that it's listed from, uh, from Wes.
I'll, I'll second Eddie's, uh, motion.
You've heard the most, you've heard the motion, um, uh, to, to move forward, um, with the stipulation that, uh, uh, an updated letter is produced, um, so we can move forward on this matter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The eyes have it? So could you come before, you, you're gonna represent yourself tonight, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Could you come up to the podium so we can swear you in? And then you could tell us what you wanna do. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address to the record.
We already included, uh, 1125, we're not gonna be working on, and we have purchased this property. Uh, that's just the reason.
Thank you. You good?
Yep.
Tell us what you wanna do.
Okay, uh, bought the house, uh, and the property, uh, it was already said to me that the, uh, we were the last, uh, people that didn't tie into the sewer, I mean, uh, septic, would've upgraded septic system. I did that right away on the property to become a good neighbor, uh, and also let them show good faith that we were gonna do the best we could to be, uh, in, uh, fairness to all of them and, and up to code with everything, so we did that. But as I looked at the house, the more and more I looked at it, no foundation, uh, we just decided it was best that we'd start fresh. Uh, when I went to Coventry Survey, we also talked about moving it back because it was already closer to the water. We got approval from DEM and also the zoning process, and, uh, so we're gonna set the house back, um, and build, uh, it's, I think it comes out to about 29 to 3100 square feet house, four bedroom, two bedrooms and the walkout basement, uh, one master bedroom on the first floor, and then another bedroom above the garage. Maybe any other questions about, I have, is there a, I have this here, I don't know if that's up on the screen, any of the plans?
So you're actually gonna back the house away from the pond?
Yes, I'm going farther, much farther back. Yes, sir. That's, so that's proposed? Yeah. The existing was that-
This is right here.
Yes, yes. And that is actually already down and demoed, I got a demo permit, we've already demoed that, cleaned it all up, and now we propose to go back farther and square off on the site plan, uh, 10 feet off the property of, uh, our next-door neighbor Carlos. All the people have, all my neighbors have signed off, uh, on it. Um, the Covenant Committee has approved it, I can attest to that honestly, and we'll get a updated letter for sure. This, I haven't seen, uh-
I can try and get everything.
Okay, thank you, sir. So that will be the side, you, side of the house to drive down from, from Raymond's Point, uh, entry and be able to go into the garage. The lower plan is the front, uh, facing the water, where it has all the glass, will have a walkout basement, and I believe it's gonna be a 10-foot deck, uh, wrapped around. Uh, my architect did a great job, Robert Moran, uh, was very happy, uh, there's some of the elevations and stuff like that, and then-
So from the original footprint, how much bigger are you making this house?
The original footprint, I believe the other, the other house was about 800 feet, maybe 1,000. And now we are, and when it was a, uh, two-bedroom, and now we are going to a four-bedroom. The septic system was already upgraded to a three-bedroom, one at a time, and now we got approval from DEM to go to a four-bedroom. It has a 1,500-gallon tank, so probably two times the size.
And you're planning on staying there, um, year-round?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're gonna be moving more into town?
Yes, unfortunately, you're gonna get me.
I'm sorry?
Unfortunately, yes, you're gonna get me here.
Bottom of the job. Uh, any questions for the board?
Look, I see something about the, being, uh, adjacent to the boat ramp, uh-
Yes, so there's, that, that boat ramp is a, yes, right there, there is a wall there. That, that boat ramp isn't the one that the, the condominium, uh, association locks up, it's down farther, but that one, no one really uses it as, as we've been doing work, uh, clearing and taking down the house, I've actually, I told the board, the Covenant Committee, that I would clean that up, and we've, uh, done so far. Um, and probably when I'm all done with it, I'm actually gonna probably either cement or pave to make it a better, uh, boat ramp for everybody to use. Yep.
Is that on your property?
No, it's common, it's a common area.
It's a common.
I own that triangle, but then we also have pot owners of all the other 92 acres. Yes, sir.
So you've demolished the house already?
Yes, sir. It was, uh, when I talked to the building inspector, I got the, I did temporary services already, everything was disconnected, I have temporary service there. Uh, it hasn't been a big rush for the unfortunate with the wood prices.
Everything that needs to be upgraded has been.
Yes.
Your, your, uh-
Except- Septic, the only thing that's gonna be added for the septic system, I believe I have six right now, um, diffusers, I think we're gonna upgrade it to three more diffusers on the back end, uh, shouldn't be a problem at all, that I've gone, already gone over and got approval with DEM, uh, with, uh, Coventry Survey.
Do you have any plans to, to show this?
Uh, we've-
Do you have that in the file? John, do you have that approval?
Does the board have any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if he's gonna come back and give you copies of that letter from the, um, from the board for the subsequent meeting, I also wanna see approval of the subsequent-
Oh, absolutely.
That would be in my stipulations, absolutely. It's a great idea, thank you. Excellent.
Sam from Covenant Survey has been great, he started that process and, uh, with me and for me, and, uh, we started off with the septic. I was at, originally, when I looked at this house, um, I was really gonna think of just trying to upgrade and clean it up and maybe add on, and I, the more I, as I started doing it, I'm, I do, I own a plumbing and heating and air conditioning business, and the more I looked at it, I, I wasn't gonna, it wasn't gonna be my standards of living, um, there was just so much against me and, uh, with that house, and I brought, uh, a friend who's a building inspector and said, I think you could just get this knocked down just by the safety of it, and, uh, and that's what I kinda did, so.
This is 70 years of experience.
Yeah, it was just-
It was.
Yes. Um, I think, uh, like I said- It's, it, a lot of, a lot of the stuff that's been up there has been there for years, and, you know, you're obviously gonna change it to make it better, more, more, you know, movable, uh, it, it'll, it'll fit into the, into the condo much better than, you know, the older buildings that are in there. I mean, every time we upgrade it, 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 it's a plus for everybody, so. Just to whip up a position of the house where it was crooked on the property-
You're technically out on the point, right?
Yes, I am, yes, sir.
Okay.
My cousin actually lives right across this, right across the point from me, uh, in Shady Valley, um, so I got lucky with the house, I thought it was-
Yeah, you ran on the four corners.
Yeah, little rough with the boats and the ramps, but, uh, the view is beautiful.
Oh, yes, it is. Nothing else on the board?
Definitely designed by the same designer.
Ramp's already there, it's just all it is is a dirt.
But you're gonna do something different for it.
I wasn't gonna do anything different, but it's just dirt right now, and I feel if I'm gonna be doing-
You're gonna clean it up a little bit.
I'm gonna definitely clean it up, I mean, we're gonna be doing site work there, and, uh, there's like two big telephone poles there, uh, that, that were supposed to be taken down with the septic guy, and-
The, the, the committee is still gonna have to okay that, right?
Yes.
You're not gonna be able to do it without their approval.
Um, actually, as I talked to Wes this weekend, he asked me about this, but this all came up, and because they had roads put in, he's asking me when I'm doing my site work, if the guy with the, with the, doing the site work and putting the foundation in, he's asking that when we, you're not allowed to take any soil away from the, from Raymond's Point.
That's correct.
There's another area you can dump it. So he's rather than doing that twice, they wanna backfill a lot of spots with the new road they put in, and he's asking if I'm willing to let my site guys, uh, be able to dump that in different spots so they don't have to do it, and I said, yeah, no problem. Anything we can do to, uh, be a good neighbor and, uh, work with the condo association and the Covenant Committee.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, uh, the only thing that concerns me is, you mentioned putting asphalt down, and he's within DEM's jurisdiction, he's within 50 feet of pond, so to me, he's putting down impervious surface within DEM's jurisdiction, so-
We can, we can stipulate to that, um, that, you know-
I, I probably talked out of, I'm, I wanna clean up something.
He brings a good point.
Yes.
Say asphalt, so I'm-
Once, once you're putting it down, you know, so it becomes a problem, it's a matter of record, so-
Yes.
Let's take that off the table.
Okay.
You know, improve what you can without putting in-
Yeah, and with the direction of the Covenant Committee.
Correct.
Okay. And legally.
Okay, if you can have a seat, I'll see if anybody wants to speak on this matter that's in the, that's in the audience, or-
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's the IT guy tonight that's-
That'd be that gentleman right over there, that's Cody.
Hi, Cody. So is anybody in the audience wanna speak on this matter, either for or against it? Could you raise your hand if you, if you're interested, and then subsequently come Work with me, people, work with me. If anybody's interested in making a comment either for or against this matter, could you please raise your hand so we can identify you? If anybody's interested in making a comment either for or against this matter, could you please raise your hand so we can identify you and bring you into our meeting? We don't have any responses, so the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion, you voted this.
Motion's made in second, it all in fair?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Do you vote, the ayes have it? Okay. Do a roll call vote, Mr. New?
Two, two votes.
Right. The. Do especially use permit first, and then the dimensional second. Mr. New, votes, aye? Prove? Prove? Ed?
With the stipulations, that's the permissions, all these letters and so on.
All documents.
Documents we received before our next meeting.
You upgrade from the condo association, DM, septic. And.
And then he changes to that ramp.
Then you're not gonna be able to put asphalt over there.
Oh, I think it's allowed with the permit.
From DM, really?
Yeah, so give us all that stuff.
The chair also approves with, with stipulations. Okay. Now the very, so.
The chair, you're gonna review those docs prior to ratification.
Correct.
Okay.
There's next meeting.
If they're here for us in September, great, if not, then we, you know.
Okay.
But hopefully, you people haven't won before we will.
I agree.
Now, do they have to go back to planning after this? Okay. On the, um, dimensional variance, how do you vote? Approve?
It is again, stipulations.
And the chair also approves of stipulations. Motion's been approved.
I'm just wondering, if they drop down, just wanna see, because last month was. As far as the farm beach goes, that cannot be done, I'm starting until after.
You'd have to talk to the planner on that.
Call me tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
You, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, you're back on deck. I get his pet. I'm just informed that, you know, there's, without an attorney being here, we, you know, he, he, he's got grounds for appeals on pretty much of anything, so. From anybody, including the public. It's not something we like, it's something we choose to do, but we made an exception this part, and hopefully we can move on from there.
Okay, next application.
The next owner and applicant is DNS Development Group LLC, location is AP thirty-eight, lots sixty-seven and sixty-eight, Arizona Street. Zone is general business, applicant is seeking a dimensional variance for relief from loading space, landscape buffer, side yard setback and frontage requirements.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Thomas Cronin for the applicant, ten seventy Main Street, Carbon Chur Island. The app, this project, the Huntley Building, we, we have for some dimensional variances. This is on Arizona Street, off Tyoga Avenue, as mentioned by the clerk, AP thirty-eight, lots sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Now zone general business, it's vacant land on the eastern side of Arizona Street. This board is very familiar with this area as it is in the line of fire of that two-hundred-foot setback from Tyoga Avenue where the town indiscriminately made general business on one side and residential on the other. We proposed to merge these two lots into one lot and construct an eighty-by-fifty-four unit prefabricated commercial storage building. Procedurally, we got a good head start on this one. In October twenty-six, twenty-twenty, we introduced to the town council to change the zone of lot sixty-eight from residential to match its neighbor sixty-seven as general business. On November eighteen, twenty-twenty, the planning board heard this matter for a recommendation to the town council on that zone change of giving their recommendation to the council. And on March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, the town council held a public meeting and ultimately approved that zone change of lot sixty-eight to general business. On May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, we appeared before the planning board for pre-application for development plan review. As a result of this zone change, we're going to administratively subdivide and merge lots sixty-seven and sixty-eight into one lot. That lot will have fifteen thousand one hundred and eleven square feet, just above the fifteen thousand required by the general business zone. This lot is boarded to the north by vacant land zone general business, to the east by a single lot, which is half in the general business zone and half in the residential zone, that was formerly Don's Auto Top. It's currently an auto repair and a storage facility. To the south, there's a vacant residential lot, and to the west, across Arizona Street, are two single-family lots with single-family homes on them, lots seventy-three and seventy-four, which ironically are both the zone general business. The proposed building will be placed on the lot so that the rear of the building faces north, and the front of the building, the garage doors face south. This tucks the building along the northern boundary and away from the residential lot to the south. The driveway and parking areas will also be placed to the south. The building is a one-story trainsman-type building, it's kind of four garage doors. It's gonna be partially owner-occupied, two of the units will be owner-occupied. It has public sewer, private water, and public utilities and access from Arizona Street. We have to make several requests for dimensional variances with this project. The first one is we're requesting relief from the requirement for a loading space. A loading space is described in the zoning ordinance as twelve feet by sixty feet. It's a large amount of space, it's not required or beneficial to the proposed use here, and we'd like to have relief from that requirement. The second, two requests are related, they're from the minimum landscape buffer between commercial and residential use to the south, where twenty feet is required, and we have five feet proposed. We're proposing to construct a six-foot solid stockade fence along that boundary, that southern boundary, to enhance the separation with the residential lot. We're also requesting relief from the minimum landscape buffer between the commercial use, this commercial use and the commercial use to the north, which is currently vacant, where ten feet is required and five feet is proposed. This will allow placement of the building away from the residential use. We're proposing a split rail fence along that boundary to define the separation of the two lots. Similarly, we're requesting relief from the side yard setbacks, which only makes sense given what I've said, but there are ten feet required on each and five feet is proposed, same landscape and setback. And finally, we're requesting relief from the minimum frontage requirement. Where a hundred and twenty-five feet is required in the general business zone, and there's a hundred feet existing at the site, and twenty-five feet is, of relief is requested. The merger of the two lots existing will result in a single lot with conforming area above fifteen thousand feet, as we have noted. But despite the significant improvement in conformance to the zoning regs, the two lot, the two lots only have twenty-five feet of frontage each, the result, excuse me, fifty feet of frontage each, the result is a hundred feet, and there is not really anything we can do about that, so we need some relief from there. Really, all these requests are made because the pre-existing lots of records were just too small to develop for a commercial or business use. So we need to combine them and use them efficiently so that we can make the, make the property usable for the general business or commercial use. Pat Walker, the engineer, and John Rockwell, survey, are here with me, should you have any specific questions? But otherwise, I'm available to answer any concerns you might have. Okay, you're here for two lots, does the applicant own the third lot next to it? He does, well, a, a related entity owns it. A related entity. Right. Explain that. Well, it, they're check aborted right now, Mr. Chairman. Individually, LLC, individually, you know, so that they don't merge currently. So, assesses plot map sixty-nine, lot thirty-eight, lot sixty-nine is a separate, is a same entity? That's correct, DNS, yes. All right, and thirty-eight and sixty-eight lots is same entity, but that's what's in front of sixty-eight and sixty-seven, right? That's correct. Now, I'm assuming going to the. That's residential right alongside you? To the south of the project, lot sixty-nine is zone residential, yes. That's zone residential. It is. Okay, and that's where you proposed to put five feet instead of twenty feet? That's correct, with the construction of a, a six-foot stockade fence along that southern boundary wrapping around to the residential half of, in, you know, an estimate of half of lot sixty-four is also residential, and that, and that'll have a fence as well. Okay, um, John, how do you feel on that being only five feet, twenty feet is required?
Right, so, um, as Attorney Cronin said, because they were going to be putting up a six-foot high stocking fence in addition to the five-foot buffer, we were okay with that proposal because the fence would certainly block any sort of.
You wouldn't wanna put a stockade fence up and some, you know, pine trees or something?
Right, well, the five-foot buffer.
And then that area to, cause you know, fences do fall down, to make a little more pleasant, greener look over there and separate it from noise on the residential side to protect the residents.
Um, we're there on the side with the five feet, and it butts this right here, this piece that owns the former Don's Auto Top. There's never gonna be a building on this twenty-five-foot strip, you can't, you can't.
That's the commercial side.
That's the commercial side, and that's where the five foot is being asked for.
Okay, but it's also being asked for. It is also being asked for between lots sixty-eight and sixty-nine. Right.
I apologize, Mr. Chair, you're correct.
It, it is both. So, Mr. Crowe, we're, we're asking for certainly dimensional relief there, but still, there'll be some landscape design in that five feet. In other words, pine trees, as you, as you mentioned, we always used to use abreviate until that year to derailed them all. I, I don't mind it on the commercial side, I don't mind anywhere else. I do feel that five feet is kind of cutting it way down for a barrier between commercial and residential. That's why I asked John on that, and, and how the rest of the board feels on that. Cause it's, you know, your residence is your most valuable item you have in life. And I feel that that is something that, you know, we deserved, you know, we, I could see cutting it down maybe to ten feet, but five, but from twenty to five, that's cutting it down quite a bit. How the rest of the board feels.
I agree with you, I think as far as if we can, I mean, come on the residential side, if we can get away with, if we can do ten feet, if that's possible, or put up abrevieties in the fence and all, I just worry about the privacy on the, on the residential side, the commercial side.
Yeah, so we are, we are proposing to plant along the fence, the fence is, in, in addition to a landscape design for that five-foot buffer, so I, you know, I. I agree with the fence, I'm drawing, but I just want a little more space so that in the future, that buffer zone remains, whether the building gets sold or not. So. And I, I apologize also, Mr. Cronin, I have to swear you in since you're giving testimony. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but truth in front of this board? I do. Okay. So theoretically, if we went to the ten feet, we would be here asking for other relief. You know, the entry, entryway size, turning radius, you know, these things, I mean, this is the most efficient plan we could come up with to place this in a favorable, you know, position to the use of the property, apparently, excuse me one moment, Mr. Chairman? Ms. Walker was reminding me that lot sixty-nine is currently vacant, there's no, no one living there, it's just zoned residential. But I, what I, what I would suggest to the board, given the opportunity to control lot sixty-nine at the current time, is that i- instead of expanding the five-foot landscape buffer on the side of lot sixty-eight, perhaps due to the control over lot sixty-nine, if we could add, if we, I could suggest a stipulation to add additional vegetative buffering on the other side of the fence, you know, so that, to you, abreviate is the wrong word, right? But some kind of greenery planted on both sides of that fence by the applicant at the time of the development. Right, but only leaving a five-foot buffer, the, that can be removed at any time down to the five feet, or. Well, it'd be five feet on lot sixty-eight and, and additional greenery on lot sixty-nine, which, as we control it now, we're, we're capable of planting that now along that same, so that would be landscape buffering on both sides of that fence. Okay, I don't mind on that one, but I'm talking more, now, sixty-nine is a commercial, right? Uh, that, no, that is a residential, it's currently listed on this plan as vacant residential.
Who owns that?
DNS Development.
Out of this group?
Yes. So they. Controlled by the applicant. So that is the only other residential, that's the only, only other area that's residential that borders? Well, it, it does border a half of lot sixty-four, but that's not five feet over there, this, if I'm reading that plan correctly, twelve feet available over there, up to twenty feet, depending on where that. Ms. Walker, what is that box with the X in it on the southeast corner of the plan? You can please step up to the podium, give me your full name and address.
Patricia Walker, Walker Engineering, thirty-one Vale Court, West Greenwich, Rhode Island.
You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
So the box with the.
Mr. Crowe, can I approach the, uh?
Sure.
And just come up to the podium.
It's been a long time. I will not, this block trade.
There's, as you can see, the lot behind the old Don's Auto, whatever, it's partially zoned general business and partially zoned residential, kind of goes right through the lot. So if you go by a residential zone, that's where that box comes in. So we have the twenty feet on the south side and the ten feet on the north side for the landscape buffer in the rear. The box with the square is a dumpster location.
Russ, can you go up there and point out to me where the residential border is?
Where the border is?
Yeah, what, what.
Let me just, I, I'm just gonna show you, let's go over to the zoning map, turn the zoning map back.
It's probably not current, though.
I know it's not current, but I'll explain it to the board. Sixty-seven right here, and see this sixty-eight, now, the, the gray area is everything zone general business. As Mr. Cronin stated earlier, what they did was they just drew a line down Tyoga Avenue, they created in the zone. So the yellow is our twenty residential, the gray is your general business. So the yellow is our twenty residential, the gray is your general business zone. This lot sixty-eight right here, it was yellow, the town council granted them a zone change, so it is now zoned general business. It just hasn't been changed in this manner. So it is zoned general business. This is what Walker was talking about here. This is the old former Don's Auto Top building in the back. This is a split zone. If you could see, the line goes right through a corner of the building. So this part of Don's property is residential, this side is general business. In addition, the only other thing I wanted to point out is, see all these homes on the east, west of the side of Arizona Street? While they're all homes, they're all in a general business zone. If you notice, they're all, this one here, but these four homes are all in a general business zone. So was I able to answer your question, Bob? You wanted to see the way the zone works? That's what we're looking at over there.
On what the applicant is front of us, I'd like to know where the residential zone starts.
Where the residential start?
On the application it's from.
All right, so let me just draw you... Okay, so what I got right here, I'm going to draw you a line on this lot right here. Okay, so I just drew that new line. That's going to be your new line for your general business zone, because this lot sixty-eight is now general business.
Correct.
So this is the residential area that abuts this property right here, lot sixty-seven to sixty-eight. So this lot sixty-nine is all general business. This lot and Don's Auto Top, I'm sorry, is residential, I mean, is residential, thank you, John. And the remaining lot of sixty-four, the former Don's Auto Top, this is also residential right here.
All right, but, so sixty...
Sixty-nine, right?
Which one's residential?
They own sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine. They own all three.
And the issue with discussing the five feet is between sixty-nine and sixty-seven?
Sixty-eight and sixty-nine.
The other side, we've got no problem.
The other side, we weren't so concerned because it abuts this general business strip where there's never going to be any building.
Okay, how about to the right of sixty-eight?
Over here?
No.
Down below, keep going, next one.
To the right of sixty-eight.
We good there as far as, did that meet the twenty feet?
It does, yes.
So that's going to meet the twenty feet?
Yep.
In the back?
So we're basically talking about letting he owns both of them?
Right where you get the white spot is where it's going to border residential and general business.
Correct, right along this line right here.
All right, so that's where I'm concerned about, where it's supposed to be twenty feet, and we're only going to do five feet.
Right, this is that same line that I'm showing you right here.
But he owns both of them.
What's his plan for that of a lot? I don't know, you'd have to talk to his attorney.
Yeah, just sell it for a residential lot, build a house.
Build a house. So that's where I'm concerned that the, we're taking the twenty feet and turn it down to five feet.
So what I'm suggesting, Mr. Crowe, is instead of expanding the landscape buffer on lot sixty-eight, instead stipulate that a landscape buffer be installed along that same boundary on lot sixty-nine.
Because they own it.
Because they own it, they have control over it.
Well, what power do I have to do that?
What's the...
You're offering it.
I'm offering it.
He rips that out. Can you stop, can you write that, that it follows with the property?
I could, yeah. I could put it in the deed.
Yes.
Yes, the...
Be a stipulation?
Yeah, it can be a stipulation.
And when they sell that property, that buffer on that public piece has to remain?
Has to stay there, right.
So we'll have a total of a ten-foot buffer?
Right.
That works.
I like that. The maintenance of the shrubbery would have to be on each owner, I would imagine.
Which is him.
Which is, that's his own book once.
So Ms. Walker is reminding me of my zoning regulations, which is slightly embarrassing, but anyway, the lots, the answer to your question is in the zoning regulation in that lot sixty-nine has a similar responsibility in separation of that boundary between residential and commercial to have ten feet of landscape buffer on their side. So what we're doing is preemptively stipulating and putting that in.
It would be fifteen feet, excuse me.
It would be fifteen, ten, that's total, right?
Okay, okay, I like that.
It would have to, they'd have to do it anyway, right? Well, yeah, I would agree with Mr. Crowe that, you know, we should put it in there.
Okay. Other than that, I mean, everything else seems to be perfectly fine. Unless, you know, board members have any other questions to ask?
Yeah, storage, yeah, car storage, trucks.
He runs a landscape company, it's going to be landscape equipment in the two that he uses, and he plans on renting it out to similar use, so...
It's not like long-term storage, it's basically every day they're going to do it.
That's correct. That's what's anticipated. Tradesman's units is like the term that we've been throwing around.
How is operation?
We'll comply with the coagulatory ordinances in every way, we're not asking for any exception.
All right. Okay, as we were asking. Okay, if you have nothing else to add, I think we'd like to see if there's anybody here that would like to speak about this, this proposal? Does any neighbors here that would have any questions on it? Anybody has any general questions, I'd like them, please come up to the podium and ask them, or if anybody in the, would like to raise their hand and be recognized. Anybody here in the audience would like to be recognized and have a question on this application? Okay, how about anybody on screen or anything? Do you have anybody that... Okay. All right, I am familiar with the area, I just had a tough time getting my head around the lot locations and the way the town has rezoned it. It is a tough area for residential. We've had that Don's Auto Top in front of us before, so each member has been able to go over and see that, I believe, but I would like members, you know, see it. I don't know if the members would like to vote on that tonight or go over and visit and vote on it next month. What is the pleasure of the board?
I have no problem voting on it.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, okay. So Keith, I'm going to do a real call vote. You'd like to approve on voting this tonight?
I approve with all the necessary stipulations.
Just to vote on tonight?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Lenny?
I agree to vote on it.
Russ? Ed?
Yes.
I also approve tonight. Okay, now, I'd like to all vote on the application as presented with the stipulations that we just proposed on the residential side. Keith, how do you vote on this?
I approve stipulation.
With stipulation, okay.
I approve with stipulations.
I also approve stipulation, Russ.
I approve with stipulations.
Ed? Okay, application is approved with stipulation.
Thank you.
Okay, could we have the next application run into the...
The next application is under new business. The owner applicant is Christopher Cole, location is AP 318 Lot 36, sixty-eight acres of Pine Road, zone is RR2. Applicant is seeking a special use permit and dimensional variance to place a twelve-by-twenty-three-by-ten shed in the front yard, two feet from the property line.
Okay. Okay, is the applicant here, please?
I am.
All right, can you please step up to the podium? We'd just like to, I see in the office.
My weight comes to me.
Oh, please.
Ready?
Okay, sir, can you please give your full name and address?
Christopher Cole, sixty-eight acres of Pine.
Young lady?
Hi, I'm Kim Cole, sixty-eight acres of Pine.
Okay, please raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay. What would you like to do?
We'd like to construct a shed to store all my guard equipment and miscellaneous storage that we can't fit in our house.
Okay. So it's going to be a twelve-by-twenty-three-by-ten shed, and you're actually going to put it in the front yard, okay. John, can you put it up on the screen actually how they're going to construct this?
Already up.
It's already up?
Yeah, there was already a...
Putting it up without building permit, and then they were issued assistance.
There was already a shed in the same exact location.
Okay, yes, I did see that, yes.
Does that picture help you?
Yes, now, how far are you from the property line?
Two feet. The old shed was eighteen inches.
Oh, there was an old shed there?
Yes, correct.
You have pictures of the old shed?
I do, yes, I do.
Okay. You're about a couple inches further away from the property line now?
I am.
The same side with the old one or...
It's a little bit bigger, a couple feet.
Couple of feet, which was taller, wider, longer?
Same height, it's a little bit, two feet wider, and maybe a couple feet longer too.
Okay, I'm going to be honest, my problem is two feet from the property line, you can maintain this, put a ladder up against it and not fall over?
Right, correct.
We normally do not let any of them go shorter than seven feet from the property.
I do have a picture, I know you had seen a picture, but I do have a picture of the previous house with the shed and everything. I don't know if that's going to help at all. Yeah, same one, same one.
What was the reason that you tore the old one down?
It was starting to rot.
Okay.
It had been up since, by the tax assessors, they said it had been up since nineteen sixty-eight.
And we've been paying taxes on it.
Now, would he have a right to knock down the old one and put a new one up, the same size, same location, same footprint?
The way the zoning ordinance reads, and correct me if I'm wrong, he has the right to knock it down on his own, but the ordinance strictly states, if the applicant knocks it down at his own free will, when he rebuilds it, it has to be built according to the guidelines set there.
So we were trying to just fix it, sorry, but the whole, it just fell down. We were trying to just fix what was there, but then it just...
We also have a very narrow property line, so in order to get the ten feet, it would be in the middle of our yard, you know, most into the driveway.
No, I agree with you. Normally, I'd say I don't agree with this at all, but since there was already a shed there, you made it, what's that?
They cut down the tree.
They cut down the tree, yeah.
See, the way, the way it applies to homes, if they left the foundation, but see, that doesn't apply here because I don't think they have a foundation.
No, we did not.
So...
Do you have a foundation underneath it now?
I do not.
Did the building official, because of the size of the shed, did the building official say you needed a foundation?
When I talked to him when we went to get the initial building permit, he said he had observed the area and that building-wise it was fine. That's what he verbally told me.
I think it's seven, maybe six hundred.
But I did, I did put some footings and some pylons, I put them at forty-two inches down and about twelve inches wide.
Regent septic system?
Septic is in my driveway.
So it's right there going in front of the shed?
It's about thirty feet to the right of it. It's, if you look in the, oh, I can show you this picture, it has the cap on it, do you mind if I approach?
Okay.
So wait, maybe there's a cap right there, not fishing.
Okay, but where is your leach field?
No, I don't even think it's a septic, I think it's a...
No, you can keep it, unless the board wants to see it.
I'm good.
All right, so all you got is a cess pool.
Or you're not on top of it.
Correct, we are not, no, no. And we bought the house six years ago, everything was okay as far as the leach field.
Yeah, there's really no other place to put that shed, and you improved what was there because the present shed was falling down.
Correct.
And if you had to, which you may have to do, replace the septic system, you're going to need that space.
Yes.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Do we remove that tree?
Yes. We had what, a tree, come and remove it.
And I got one more question, why is there a air conditioner on the shed?
I don't know.
That was the previous owner, he had never used it.
We never used it.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Does the new one have electricity?
No.
It has nothing right now.
Maybe we can, can we have a building inspector go over there and have it, you know, you have no electrical in it, right?
No.
Are you planning on putting electricity?
If it's possible, I would love to. If not, again...
You'd have to take out a permit and just get it all approved.
I'm sorry?
You'd have to take out a full permit.
Yeah, okay, no, that's fine.
Okay.
You wouldn't be objectionable to having a building inspector come over and see what you've done so far?
Not at all.
To make sure that it's up to...
Absolutely. And I mean, obviously...
That would be a requirement, a stipulation, if this board was to approve it, that the building would have to be approved by the building inspector.
I mean, I, since I had this stop order, I couldn't put any of the proper strapping that I needed, the Simpson ties, all the hurricane straps. So there is stuff I still haven't done, but I do have...
Once you get the permit, you explain that to them.
Okay, I mean, I do have it in the shed, so it's on the, it's there.
But you have no permit now, correct?
Oh, no, that's what we're going for, correct.
They're going to just follow through.
Right.
Once they get the permit, they're going to do it.
Okay. All right, anybody else, any board member, seventy-four? Okay, this time here, I'm going to ask you to take a seat. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this application? Yes, young lady, please give your full name and address.
Good morning or good evening, Attorney Sherry Perkins, I represent the abutters right next to where that shed has been constructed, which is Ronald Perkins and Lou Fashara. They purchased this house in sixty-nine, seventy, around there, there was a small shed there, which apparently grandfathered in, should not have been in the front yard, was in the front yard, and I understand the current owners decided they were going to upgrade this shed, which they proceeded to do without any permits, and did that construction when my clients were not actually here, because they live part-time in New York, part-time here, and it is much larger than... larger than the other shed, much larger, and is right next to the fence. And their representation that it can't be any further away from the fence is not accurate. They have, and I could show the board photos, that they have a large front yard. They could easily make a seven-foot setback from that fence. There's no foundation that could move the structure as it exists right now and be more in compliance and not right next to my clients and blocking their view. First of all, we all know that the shed should have been in the other yard. Apparently, it was grandfathered in. I would argue that it should not have been expanded to the level it has been. And I have personally been there and taken photos. It's a huge structure now. I don't know what they're gonna store in there, but they could store a lot of stuff in there. And I think it's an eyesore to be in the front yard. And if they want it in the front yard, they should move it, the required setback from the fence from my client's property, and put it more toward their driveway. It's not gonna be on their septic or cesspool or anything. Let them have it in their front yard, not right next to the fence. As you said, seven feet is usually the minimum you would do. They clearly have way more than that to move that structure away from the fence. And I worry about how they've expanded the original footprint of that shed. It was much smaller, and whether they had the right to make it that much bigger. They could have put it on the other, they could have put it at the front of their property, but they have a lot of stuff in the front of their property. They've got boats, they've got toys, they've got things. And apparently, they have a lot more things that they need to store in a much bigger shed in the, in the front of this property, right next to my client's property. And I would ask the board to not grant them the variance to enlarge this, or a dimensional variance to keep it close to the fence, when they clearly have the room to put it within, you know, a normal distance from that fence, and not, you know, obstruct my clients who own this house in 69. They never spoke to my client, never addressed it with them, and my opinion was, from talking to them, was, they're never here, who cares? And if the board would like to see the photo of how much frontage they do have, I'd be happy to share that with you. They've got plenty of frontage.
We have those photos.
All right, let me, I'll go out and take a look.
Attorney Perkins?
Yes.
Can you please state your address for the record?
Office, 66 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879.
Okay, is there anything else you looked at?
I don't want you to have any questions for myself or my clients, who are both here. I would add to the board that it's kind of a slippery slope. You know, once you allow one little structure to be totally blown up and enlarged, moved closer, where does that end? You know, what does the next house do? What does the house after that go? They say, oh, I could put a garage in my front lawn, which essentially, you could drive a car into this.
Who owns the fence?
My clients own the fence. You own the fence, right? Yes.
Okay, I don't have the rest of, any other boards have any questions? I'd like to go out and take a look at this first before I vote on it.
Yes. Too close to the water.
Too close to the water here. It could be moved, picked up and moved. Okay, if the applicant, if your client would like to-
Do you wanna speak, Ronnie?
No, I just wanna say that like 24, 22. If he's gonna speak, he's gotta-
He's gotta be-
If you wanna speak, you gotta get up here and be sworn in. You can't just talk them back there. You can't scream from them. Yeah, all right, he doesn't wanna speak. He doesn't wanna get up.
No problem, no problem. All right. If you have nothing else to add, we'll see if anybody else would like to speak. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this application? Yes, after everybody else has spoken. Anybody else, is anybody in the audience in the, on the telescreen that'd like to speak? Okay, the applicant would like to come back up. Please come up to the podium.
I just wanna say that we actually did try to speak to them, and they weren't home. There's three other houses that are on our street. One's vacant. We spoke to the two other homeowners, who were both fine with the building, the shed. A couple days or a day or so before we got the cease and desist order, my, one of my neighbors actually came over and spoke to my husband, and he had no ill will. He didn't say he was unhappy with it, he just asked about it. So we had no idea that this was even a problem until we got the cease and desist order. That being said, we didn't know why until we met their niece two weeks ago or so, who confronted me and my neighbors, my yard proceeded to tell me how this was an eyesore. We have, they have a very obstructed, so this is a street view obstruction, it's not a water view. I have pictures of the street that they say were obstructing. I also have pictures-
Well, I will go out and take a look.
Of bushes that are as tall as the shed, and that their water view-
We have them.
No, it's, it's a different view.
But this is, this is clear, we understand.
Their bushes are as tall as the shed, and their water view, which we always have found surprising, their water view is obstructed by a humongous tree. So they have no view of the water, they have no, they want a view of-
All right, we cannot get into what their view is, you know what I mean? That's their own privacy, you know? But we will go over and take a look at the structure, and it is close to the property, as you realize.
Right, and, and I-
And it is much larger than it originally was, and it does require a permit. There's no-
Correct.
No maybes about it, so it's still gonna be-
And if I do gotta say, if we do move it to where she says we would be fine, if we do have to put a cesspool in or a leach field, obviously, we won't be able to.
Well, you might have to take down the shed.
Right, so at that point, if we have it in the current location, might be in our, might be able to do it.
You might be, you're gonna have a problem with the septic system no matter what. You only have so much land.
Correct.
So I mean, you can't expect a neighbor to accommodate you for a-
Correct, which is understandable, I get that.
No more than you would do it for somebody else.
No, and it was not like we were trying to do this niggly. I mean, he's, he's got three other houses, so, and we don't know when he's home. He's come and goes, he come and goes.
Yeah, but again, that's-
So, I know, it's, it's, it's typically, I get it. So, we did try.
All right, let's go out and take a look at it, see if there's anybody else who would speak on it. Any board members have any questions or anything on this application? Okay, at this time here, let's have a motion.
Have we taken under advisement or decision of revision?
Do I have a second on that? Okay, second is made by Keith.
All right. And we don't have to stake it out because it's already there.
No, you don't have to stake it out or anything, so, all right, we'll go out and take a look at it.
When, when, when are you pretty much there a lot?
Well, honestly, I could be at any time. I do work, you know, five days a week, 7:30, but I have the flexibility, if need be, I can be at any point.
We have your number, so I just don't wanna be walking around and, you know, and you just gonna see me and wonder why I'm there, although it could-
I will knock on the door and tell you who I am.
That's, no, no, this is fine.
I have a, myself as well, I have a very variable schedule. I have different days on. I know I'm home Friday after 12, but I'm working.
Thank you.
I would wanna be there as well, if possible, in case-
Okay, each and every member shows up at individual times.
Oh, okay.
It's not like we do a-
A group viewing.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a site visit.
Okay.
Yep, so, thank you, Bill, very much. Okay, so-
Motion was made.
Motion was made, and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, ayes. Okay, next application.
The next application is Miki Koutou. Location of property is AP 311 Lot 66.2, 2100 Harkney Hill Road. Zone is RR5. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and special use permit to construct a 40 by 22 addition, 22.1 feet from the property line where 50 feet is required.
Okay, is the individual here? Please step up to the podium. Okay, give your full name and address.
Miki Koutou, 2100 Harkney Hill Road.
And the young lady?
Julie Koutou, 2100 Harkney Hill.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you both to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, please explain to me what you'd like to do.
So currently, what we would like to do is build an addition off the back of our house with two rooms, which would include a study and an office onto the property with a bathroom, built off our current house and off the deck. There are sketches and measurements that we have included in the packet.
Okay. So what are you, you're gonna, you're gonna put a additional two rooms with an extra bathroom and-
Correct. So I, I currently teach in the COVID world of things. I spend a really great time virtually teaching. So I have a 17-year-old at home and two dogs running around, yelling and screaming. I spend a really great time. So having a place to have just off the house, to have a study and an office, I virtually tutor. And having a place off the house, separate from bedrooms and a bathroom included, is what we're seeking at the moment. We've talked to both neighbors on either side. We did all of our Butters' letters and didn't originally refer from anyone.
Okay, and I'm looking here for a set of plans. Just a minute, a set of plans?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other piece of it is, we can't put it on the other side of the house due to the plumbing and the septic not being on that side of the property, so it affects where we put-
Because you're adding an extra room in the bathroom, is that just gonna affect the septic system? Are you gonna have to upgrade your septic?
No, we're actually gonna eliminate one of the bathrooms already, you know, first of all, when we redo our kitchen.
Okay, you just replaced the bathroom?
Yes, we're just moving it.
The size of the septic system is not based on bathrooms?
It's on bedrooms.
Correct. You just said you're gonna eliminate a bathroom?
Yes.
They're gonna move it.
I'm, I'm also adding another bedroom. No, I'm not adding a bedroom, we're adding a study.
No, it's not. Nope, it's a study and an office.
Mr. Chair, I did bring up safety, just planned that by a survey, right?
Correct. Company and work, work survey.
Okay, and here's the proposal addition that they have. With setup showing.
Okay. I really don't have any complaints. It looks like it's gonna be a nice addition. My biggest thing is, what everybody's already been saying, is of course, we'd have to have your current ISD as plan approved for the addition. Explain it in a different way. In order to obtain a building permit?
They're not adding any bedrooms.
No, they're just, we're not doing-
Remains the same, you so the septic, you have three bedrooms right now?
Yes, three bedrooms.
Right.
So he's gonna approve, state-approved, three-bedroom system?
I already have one.
And when he applied for a building permit with the building office statement, they would sign off on it because-
That's all I'm saying. Yep, okay, yep, I'm good with that, then.
And really, this, the variance on the dimension, it, it's in a straight line where the house is now, so it, it's kind of where it is now. I mean, we don't need the setback already.
Correct.
So it's-
Right, so I almost think it's not even-
Well, it has to come before us, but it's not, it's not radical at all. It's just an addition to an existing situation.
Right. I have no complaints whatsoever.
It's basically, it's gonna come right off the back break here.
Yeah, right. Okay. Board members have any other questions? Okay, John, do you have any questions? Russ? And I'll check with our attorney.
No, thank you.
And this did go before the planning commission, now if they receive-
Yes.
Oh, great, that's even better. That's nice. Okay, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat and see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this application. Does anybody here would like to speak on this application? For or against, or just have questions in general? Okay, I'm gonna see if there's anybody on the video audience. What do you think?
I do see a hand, please.
You do see a hand. Kevin Adams. Yep. Oh, I'm sorry, please, if I could recognize Mr. Kevin Adams?
We need to see him to swear him in. Okay.
And he's gotta unmute if he's muted.
Unmute.
Kevin, could you unmute your system and also turn on your camera if you have that availability?
He's gone. He's gone. No, never mind.
Are you there, Kevin? I'm not sure he's got a camera. I think it's just unvocal. Kevin, we're reaching out to you, but we need to, we need to speak to you and see you. Otherwise, we won't be able to hear your testimony or see your testimony.
I'm gonna ask legal counsel.
Sure. Well, while you're doing that, I'll just, so perhaps we could ask Mr. Adams to call in. There is a call-in number that he could utilize. If he's having some technical difficulties with the computer, he can call in on the, on the meeting agenda. And just for the record, I'm just gonna read the call-in number. 1312-626-6799, or toll-free 877-853-5247. And I'm just gonna read the webinar ID number, which is 83234420831, and the meeting passcode 652830. So, Mr. Adams, if you aren't able to hear us, we cannot hear you, you can call in and we can hear, we'd be able to hear you through the telephone.
Chair, you had asked me to find out where Mr. Adams resides. This is his address, his 833 Whaley Hollow. He's on Whaley Hollow. This is his house right here. The house we're talking about is right here.
So the property abuts each other.
They do, see this little corner right here?
That's it.
He might have just had a question, you know, he wants to ask how close the addition would be to his property.
Well, I'm gonna just-
If we could just give him-
I'm gonna give him a measurement from the corner of their house to the corner of his house. As the crow flies, 1,021 feet.
Okay, that's, that might have been, and he might wanna know if that was gonna encroach, or if he was gonna clear any land back there or make it more visible to him.
Personally, I don't, I don't know that he could see the existing- Personally, I don't, I don't know that he could see the existing home, never mind any addition.
Okay.
You know, this, this is all, this is all heavily wooded, he's familiar.
Yes.
I can see all the trees, um. How are we making out? Well, let's, let's check it out.
I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll, so, um, Mr. Adams, we're not sure if you are the telephone number ending in eight, four, four, five. Uh, if you are, um.
Uh, yes, I am. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Mr. Adams, this is the Coventry Zoning Board Review, and did you have any questions on the application?
Um, I do just have one question. So I am in a butter in the, in the far rear corner. So if you're looking at their house from Harkney Hill Road, I'm in the far left-hand corner.
Correct.
Is the addition, is the, is the addition being built on, on that side of the house or the other side of the house?
It's away from you.
It's away from you.
It's in the other corner of the house.
I don't believe you'd see it from your house.
Yeah.
Can you see the house now from your house?
Um, I actually cannot see the house, no.
Okay.
I don't think the addition you would see either, currently, I mean, uh.
Do you have a question in regards to that?
So I, so I have no, I just wanted clarification on that. I have no additional questions and no concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest.
Yes, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion made and seconded, uh, do a roll call vote on, to vote on this tonight. Keith, how do you feel?
I, I say we vote on it tonight.
Mike, I'm also gonna include you on this, okay? Lanny? I also approve. Russ? Uh, Ed? Approve the vote on it tonight.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. All right, um.
Mr. Chairman, we have two votes, sir.
You're correct. Uh, we have a dimensional variance and a special use, correct?
Yes.
Let's do a special use first. Uh, Keith, how do you vote on this?
Approve.
Lanny?
Approve.
I approve. Russ?
Approve.
Eddie?
Approve.
Okay, that was on the special use permit. The dimensional variance, Keith, how do you vote?
I approve.
Lanny?
I approve.
Chair also approves. Russ?
Approve.
Ed? Okay, variance is approved, estimated for the special use permit and a dimensional variance. Okay. Okay, the next application, please read in the record.
The next applicant is Andrew J. Baloo.
Oh, you know what I'm gonna ask you to do first? Um, I believe we have one here from Hill Farm Camp since he has a lawyer sitting here waiting. Can we put that?
That's the one I'm reading.
Okay, all right.
The owner applicant is Andrew J. Baloo. The location is AP three, thirty-three lot, six point thirteen, six Hill Farm Camp Road. Zone is RR two. Applicant is seeking a special use permit and a dimensional variance to remove and replace the existing single-family residence and garage. The proposed twenty-four by thirty-six garage will be located in the front yard and the thirty by forty-two house will be forty-eight feet from the rear property line where ninety feet is required.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, ten seventy Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island. For the applicant, uh, Andrew Bolio, in the condominium, uh, Hill Farm condominium. Uh, you'll see when you see the plan why that is. The, uh, septic design is on the common land of the condominium, uh, as allowed, um, in the condominium documentation. Okay, Mr. John Rockwell is here with me, uh, tonight. He's a surveyor who prepared the plans and, uh, he's gonna make the presentation. Mr. Rockwell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Rockwell, President, Coventry Survey Company, forty-six South Main Street, Coventry.
Okay, hang on, I got, John, uh, did you get his full name and address on this where you went?
I did.
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth and not but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Okay.
So, uh, this is a newly created condominium association from existing private camps developed in the nineteen forties. This condo, the specific condo lot that Andrew owns contains approximately fourteen thousand square feet, which is part of a larger lot, AP thirty-three lot six point one three, being roughly sixty-six acres and adjoining Flat River Reservoir to the east. The applicant has an existing five-bedroom camp and garage, which is slated to be demolished. The proposed plan is to build a three-bedroom dwelling and a three-car garage. The dwelling will be thirty by forty-two and the garage will be twenty-four by thirty-six. The site is served by private well and septic system. Currently, we are awaiting review by Rhode Island V E M Wetlands and the Outspore Group. And the applicant is seeking a special use permit and dimensional variance from the zoning board. The special use permit is for the expansion of non-conforming use of the condo association. This is similar to the Flat River Condo Association on Raymond's Point. Also, the special use permit will allow for the proposed garage in the front yard. The dimensional variance is for the ninety-foot rear setback, which in this case is measured from the high water line of the reservoir. The relief saw is forty-one point seven feet. And I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that you have.
Okay, uh. You might have heard in the audience, I requested Andrew to have an attorney here because one thing, this is the first application from Hill Farm Condo Association. And how many, I'm gonna, uh, Mr. Pro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
How many condos are in this association?
There's seventy-seven land units, uh, in the condominium, uh, not all of which have, uh, single-family cottages on them. One's vacant, one has an apartment house on it. It, it's an, it's a, a condominium conversion of what existed at the time uh, of the condominium of declaration in August of, uh, twenty twenty. So seventy-five of the lots are similar to the ones you're seeing here tonight that have, uh, lots associated with them and single-family cottages upon them, uh, which are owned by the condominium owners. Uh, they merge upon the purchase. So, um, Mr. Bolio has an existing home that he wants to move, to improve and, uh, move back from the water. And, uh, the septic design here is actually across the street, the gravel road, uh, into the common area. He's gonna place his septic system as is allowed in the condominium documents and, uh, you have before you.
So you're familiar with the condominium documents?
I am very familiar with the condominium documents. The, uh, and, uh, as you may see, I, uh, I wrote a letter, uh, after the board heard, uh, Mr. Bolio's, the condominium board heard, Mr. Bolio's application.
Bullier.
Bullier, absolutely.
It's French.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, chief. The, uh, and they have, uh, approved the design, uh, and use, crossing of the road and use of the common space, uh, for these improvements, from Andy's improvements.
So you do not have any letter from the, they don't have, or do they have a association that approves the construction or anything?
So a- after, uh, this application was made in July of twenty twenty-one, they had their first condominium association meeting. This approval was by the declarant, the Hill family, Jim and Marion Hill. They reviewed this and approved it, uh, and issued him the condominium approval letter.
I should point out that also Andrew has been through planning and has got favorable, uh, recommendation, recommendation.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Cronin, so you're representing the condo association and the applicant?
That's correct. They're, in this particular case, they are in agreement.
Okay, but I just wanna make sure you have, because we have not just this one individual in the condo association.
Right.
We have seventy or some odd number, uh, more people that you're representing two at the same time.
The, the condominium association board, yes.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, and that was the main reason, uh, for you to be here tonight, okay? Uh, what, what is it that he'd like, so as the plans are submitted, uh, John?
Yep, uh, so the, the main reason is the, uh, well, the special use permit is to get their proposed garage in front. And then the dimensional variances, uh, less than the required ninety feet, which in this case would be measured from the high water line. Now, I should point out that the existing house is eighteen feet closer to the pond than he's proposing his new, new house, so.
Okay, now, my next question is the existing road. Do people travel through this between him and his proposed garage for use daily?
No.
No, nobody, nobody goes through that existing gravel road?
Chief, the, the roadway marked existing gravel roadway which cuts through the, uh, interior of the lot ha- was abandoned in the record plan for the condominium.
Okay, that's my next question. Okay, so that, that existing gravel roadway is no longer in use.
That's correct.
So that area would be exclusive maintenance of the individual.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, so his main access is up on where it says Hill Farm Camp Road. That would be his main access.
Yeah.
All right, so, okay, thank you. That's pretty self-cut, uh, I believe, with the three-bedroom closed dwelling. Uh, and, uh, Paul's Garage. Uh, do board members have any questions on this?
I don't have a question. I just, you know, we've, we've seen this before, um, when we're talking about waterfront property. What's the front of the house and what's the back of the house? And it, it's kind of always been a norm that the front of the house faces the pond. So technically, in my mind anyways, the, the proposed garage is in the backyard, but for all intents and purposes, it's in the front, but I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
I, I don't have a problem. It is more acceptable that way.
And they're gonna take the old garage down anyways, so it's a, it's a great improvement to the area.
And it's further away from.
And it's further away from the water, so it's, it's, it's a win-win, my estimation.
I agree. All right, let me see if there's anybody here would like to speak on this application, either for or against. Anybody here would like to speak on this application? Okay, do we have anybody in the video audience that would like to? No requests. Okay, I'd like to have a motion that, uh, we take this either under advisement or under decision with a reasonable time or if the members feel that they'd like to vote on this tonight.
Make a motion to vote on it tonight.
Okay, motion's made by Russ, seconded by Ed. Uh, do a roll call vote. Keith, how do you feel?
I say we vote on it tonight.
Okay, Mike, I'd like to include you on this. Lanny?
I vote on it tonight.
I also agree to vote on it tonight. Russ? Okay, uh, I'm gonna start it. Ed, uh, how do you vote on this application?
We have two votes.
Okay, we have two votes. Okay, you have a dimensional, a special use?
Yes.
Okay, let's start off with the special use permit. Uh, Ed, you'd like to make a motion? We vote on the special use permit?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by Keith, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, uh, Ed, I'm gonna start with you. How do you vote on the special use? You approve as presented, okay. Russ?
Approve.
Chair also approves as presented. Lanny?
Approve as presented.
Keith?
Approve as presented.
Okay, application's approved as presented, okay. Uh, dimensional variance, uh, do I have a motion to vote on the dimensional variance?
Still moving.
Keith made it, Lanny seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Okay, um, Ed, how do you vote on the dimensional variance? Approved and presented, okay. Russ?
Approve.
Chair also approves as presented. Lanny?
Approve as presented.
Keith?
Approve as presented.
Okay, application's approved as presented.
Thank the board.
The next owner applicant is Garrett Homes LLC, which is the applicant. Michael W. and Kimberly K. Hodges is the owner. Location is AP fifty-six lots nine and eleven, four ninety-five Washington Street, zone is Village Main Street Commercial. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance to demolish and construct a ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot, twenty-seven feet, seven inches high, single-story retail facility where a ten thousand square foot building is allowed.
He lives too close.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ionati would like to excuse himself, uh, being close to the application. Okay, and you are the, you are the attorney for the app, for the individual?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of this honorable board. Joseph Brennan from the Law Office of Joe Shikarchi. On behalf of the applicant, our address is two, currently, two forty Chestnut Street, Warwick, Rhode Island, zero two eight eight eight.
I'm sorry, what did you name this?
Joseph Brennan, B R E N N A N.
Okay, you're gonna give testimony, sir?
I'll just be sworn in, sure.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, not about the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, members. The application you have before you is, um, Garrett Homes LLC. The owners, Michael and Kimberly Hodges. The address is four ninety-five Washington Street and zero MacArthur Boulevard. What we're looking to do is we are looking to, uh, build a Dollar General, uh, proposed retail building. The reason why we're before you tonight is because the zoning ordinance, uh, restricts the size of the general retail stores to ten thousand square feet per zone. The use is allowed in the zone. We meet all other dimensional criteria in regards to setbacks, frontage, um, lot size, landscaping, buffering. Uh, any signage will be approved in accordance with the ordinance. But the reason we are before you is because we need that six hundred and forty additional square feet. Um, to give a small, quick history of the property, um, this property has been used for years as multiple different restaurants. None of them have survived, um, for whatever reason, it just shows that the lot is constrained in its ability for certain types of uses, which is why we believe that the retail use may be a more appropriate use for the lots. Uh, we will be combining the two lots together. Um, right now, it's an eyesore, has been abandoned for almost two years. It hasn't been producing any, um, significant income for the town and has really probably become more of a nuisance. Um, our proposal is to demolish the existing structures, the porches, uh, we provide our own pavement plan. So there will be much, much improved, uh, landscaping on our plan compared to what exists today, much less pavement. Um, the applicant also, um, received master plan approval at the planning stage. Um, I believe we also would have, that would come with a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. Um, in doing so, uh, will comply in, in all ways, as I stated, in regards to stormwater, runage, drainage. Uh, we will be connecting to sewers. There's an ability to connect to sewer and water there. Um, we realize that that comes with a different approval to the town council. Once we get through the, uh, this board, I believe that might be our next step before we go back to the planning stage for preliminaries and finals. Um, additionally, um, the site lighting will be all facing downwards. Um, we did have a couple of neighbors, um, at the master plan hearing. Um, I'm not sure if they're here tonight, um, but they did have some possible concerns about buffering. But as you can see, we meet all the landscape setbacks as required. And additionally, in the lot that's closer on MacArthur Boulevard, you'll notice that we provide a substantial, uh, buffering of landscaping from the front of, uh, where the parking lot is to the next neighboring lot. That's, we'll all be greenery, grass, and we'll also provide, um, because we've heard from the neighbors, a stockade fence along. because we've heard from the neighbors, a stockade fence along that line to also give them some additional privacy. So it's a much improved project. I think it's a great project for the town of Coventry. It really adds some good life with a really good business to the area. The reason that we're before you, as I said, is because we just need the small six hundred and forty square feet. The reasoning is that these stores kind of come as made when it comes to interior design. There's certain aisle with certain shelving, certain size that will be required, and that requires a ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot building in order to survive on this lot. And as I stated before, the restaurant uses and other things, they're not quite working. So we believe this will be a great way to retool this lot, retool this area, and bring life back to it. I do have the architect Doug Bruner here. I do have our engineer Kim Mason here as well. And the applicant, the owner of Garrett Homes LLC, Gary Ucalito. If there's any questions for the board that I don't have the ability to answer.
Okay. I don't know if I have any questions right now. I think that John has already looked at this application?
Yes.
And I'm trying to think of a disadvantage of it.
I don't have a disadvantage. I have a question about signage.
Okay. Please bring it up.
What are you looking at putting out on Washington Street for a sign?
I actually, I don't think there's any sign that we plan on. Is there?
Or is it going to be just on the building?
I think there will be a sign on the building. I'll have one of them come up to testify towards the signage, but I do know that the plan, whatever it would be, would be within the ordinances through the building official that they would request, but I'll have.
They haven't asked for any relief. Okay. Signage, and if they needed it, they'd have to come back before this. They should have asked for it when they have it.
When they put up a sign.
They just said there'd be no relief.
When we, when we, when they put up the store at the old Maplewood Inn.
Yep.
The sign that ended up being read out on a point became a big controversy as to how it was going to be put up and so on and so forth. So I figured before it became a problem, just curious, I mean, if they're going to put a sign on the building like they're down in West Hall, that's fine. And if it meets, if they're not looking for relief, then it's not a, it's a signage.
I can speak to it. My name is Gary Ucalito.
Okay, please give your full name and address.
Gary Ucalito, fifty-five Proprietor's Lane, P R O P R I E T O R S. I thought you proprietors were going to be tougher. We have some Italians on the board. E U C A L I T T O. It's Torrington, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero. Signage is.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, raise your right hand.
Yes.
You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do. Thank you. Signage will be pro zoning. I mean, I don't know who reviews signage. They bring the signage application in later. They typically negotiate with the town. If town wants less, they negotiate. Sometimes it's on the ground, sometimes it's, you know, it's a.
The planning board and the planner is okay with it. I just asked a question.
Yeah, okay.
Not problems, it's created some issues, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think the monument sign that is at the Dollar General in the corner of New Snake and Hockey Hill is a fine-looking sign. Seriously? As a heart attack.
Okay. So do I. So. It created a whole wave, if you remember.
I do. I understand.
Okay, do any board members have any questions to the applicant as to how anything's going to be presented or built or anything else?
Standard lighting for the parking lots, that's, you already said they're going to be back towards the building and not gleaming out into the neighborhood.
Yep, downward facing, so they would follow all the lighting requirements.
I have no questions. I think it's straightforward.
And you'll submit plans to the fire marshal, the local fire marshal, so.
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to take a seat. Let me see if there's anybody here who would like to speak on this application, have any questions. Please step up the platform, sir. Please give your full name and address.
Michael Moore, five Oak Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, representing Moore's Motor Service at forty-seven Washington Street.
Okay, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this?
I do.
Okay, you represent Moore's Motor Service?
At forty-seven West Street, property adjacent to this proposed.
Okay, you own that?
I'm a vice president of the corporation.
A vice president of the corporation?
His father owns it.
He couldn't be here tonight.
He couldn't be here. Yeah. Please speak to me on your concerns.
Well, I guess the biggest concerns we have are the historical aspect of the village, Washington Village, and the demographics and the changing the characteristics. You know, in a two-mile stretch on Washington Street, there's probably about a Dollar General, a Dollar Store, Family Dollar, and another Dollar General store down the street. I don't know if we need one more Dollar General on the street. If it's going to pay taxes to the town, that's a whole different story. And there's also at least a hundred and fifty-year-old copper beech tree on that property. That's been there for, you know, like I say, forever, and I'm just concerned as far as what the position of that tree is going to be, you know, and change the aspect of the village. And how this is going to impact our, our business, you know, with the construction of this. So whether it has any weight on the board or not, it's just our concerns.
All right, as far as impact on your business and location, Moore's Garage, you have a beautiful antique building there. I'm quite familiar with it, and I do not see any adverse, unless you notice something.
No.
On this, and also they could tear this building down and pretty much do almost anything they want. They're only in here for square footage of the building to be able to watch.
I understand.
That's the only reason why they're in front of us.
I just wanted to express my concern.
I don't blame you at all, sir. You have a very wonderful building there. It's in many pictures in certain areas of the town. If any other board member has any comment on this.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else like to speak on this application? Okay, is anybody in the video? Okay, is there any other board member, how many other questions? Okay, being familiar with this area, and, no, yet, I'd like to have a motion that we vote on this tonight.
So move.
Second.
All right, made by Keith, seconded by Lenny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nays, ayes have it. Okay. Keith, I'm going to start with you. How do you vote on this application?
I approve.
Lenny?
I approve.
Chair also approves. Russ? Ed? Oh, you're not, I'm sorry, Mike knew. Okay.
The original plans, that tree will run, let's get removed.
Not sure which one is the tree, is it?
The giant one, yeah, the big giant one.
It's in the driveway, yes. Yes, and that's really so that we can line up the driveway and have one separate and prosperate at that light with the big stream.
It's really for our safety, traffic concern to line up with the light. It's unfortunate, and that's, you know, part of the reason why we propose so much landscaping in the back to try to, you know.
You just asked a question. Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, next application, please. Sure.
Thank you to the board. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, can I have the next application run into record?
The next owner applicant is Marian Carden Delcignori. The location is AP thirty-two, lot eighteen, ten Deerfield Road. Zone is R twenty. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance to construct a twelve-by-twenty detached garage, ten feet from the side property line where fifteen feet is required.
Is the applicant here, please? Please step up to the podium. I'm going to ask you both to give your full name and address.
I'm Marian Delcignori, ten Deerfield Road.
Sir?
Michael Delcignori, ten Deerfield Road.
Okay, I'm going to ask you both to raise your right hand. You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth in front of this board?
Yes.
I do.
Please explain to me in your own words what you'd like to do.
We want to put up a garage, twelve-by-twenty, on the side of our house. But there's only ten feet, and we're told we need, between us and twelve Deerfield, and we're told we need fifteen feet, so we're looking for that additional five feet.
So you're going to be ten feet from the property line?
Yes.
Required setback, John, is fifteen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so five feet short. All right. Twelve Deerfield Road, where is this in town?
Off of Old North Road.
Okay.
Right opposite the senior housing.
Yeah. And in this garage you propose to put up, what are you going to do with it?
We're going to put a couple of motorcycles and some yacht equipment, lawn mowers and stuff.
And you already have a garage now?
No.
No, we have a shed. A small shed.
So that shed's going to remain and this is going to come?
Yes, this is going to be in front of it.
Should be right against the property line.
Connected to the house. It's not connected.
That shed is?
No, the garage.
With the garage?
It's going to be detached.
Detached, okay. And.
Probably between the house and the garage.
Well, I was going to say it.
It's not going to be any further than the house, not going to go.
Actually, it's going to sit back.
Sit back from the house.
Yep.
Right there.
Yep, yep. It would look nice. Any other questions from the board members? Anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Okay, Mike, you okay with it? Okay, Keith?
Approve him a lot less.
That's what I'm saying, okay. All right, all right, let me see if there's anybody here that would like to, or do I have one of the administrators have any questions on this? John? Okay, let me see if you take a seat, please, see if there's anybody here that has any questions on it. Anybody like to speak on this application? Okay, I don't see anybody in the audience. Is there anybody on the video that would like to speak on this application? Okay.
I make a motion.
Second.
The motion's been made by Keith, seconded by Russ. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes, ahs. Okay, I'm going to start off the vote with, uh... Uh, Keith, how do you vote?
I approve.
Lenny?
I approve, as presented.
Chair? I approve. Russ?
Approve, as presented.
Ed? Okay, application's approved, as presented.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next application.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you need to close out the zoning board review and open as a zoning board of appeals.
Okay, at this time here, I'd like to close the zoning board review and open up as the zoning board of review.
Appeals.
Appeals. Okay. Go ahead and read them.
It's in regarding Antonio Angelino, AP 104, Lot 85, 562 Main Street. It's an appeal of zoning enforcement officer's notice of violation stating the use of a two-family dwelling unit without the required special use permit.
Is the applicant here? Okay. I ask you to raise your right hand so you can give your testimony. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of the board?
I do.
Okay, please give your full name and address to the record.
My name is Antonio Angelino, A Kylie Way, Coventry, Rhode Island, O2816.
Okay, what would you like to, this was in front of us quite a few years ago, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, um, a few years ago, we were trying to do an in-law, and we didn't do it because there was some issues with the septic. The septic is being redone, but I found paperwork on the septic that was already rebuilt a few years back.
Okay, so...
And... So, um, in the process, when I was trying to refinance, the, um, they was discovered that, you know, the the house was a two-family, an illegal two-family. I don't believe it's a two-family. I personally do not want it to be a two-family.
But you rented it out?
No, it's not rented out. My son lives there, and he has a roommate that is rented there.
I knocked on the door, and they told me they were renting.
Yeah, it was my sister-in-law.
That was given to me.
Yes, at the time it was my sister-in-law. If you have her name, it was Debbie Tucker, correct?
I don't know who it was.
Okay, that was it. So I've always kept family within the house.
Well, still, it was rented out.
Yeah, okay, so let's call this rented out.
So it was an in-law, it was not, it was an apartment. Okay, so what are you, what are you saying now then?
Well, I just, I wanted to keep it as a one-family house, and it was suggested by Ms. Carrie Kowalski to make it a duplex. So I'm not sure if I wanted to do a duplex or not.
All right.
I mean, I don't know, I'm willing to discuss whatever the board wants me to do. I have plenty room. I'm not looking for setback, I'm not looking for anything, whatever. I just, you know, I got a son living there with a roommate, so it's just a single dwelling with two people living in it. It has separate, uh...
So you're looking for a duplex? What are you looking for?
I don't know, I don't know, I'm asking the board. What can I do? What do I do? At a single-family home.
Why don't you take a seat? Okay, Kelly.
You need to swim in?
Yes. Give your full name and address for the record.
Carrie Kowalski, 1675 Flat River Road, Coventry, Rhode Island.
And you are the?
Zoning enforcement officer.
Lieutenant Kowalski, okay. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in front of this board?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, as you may recall, this first came in front of the zoning board review in 2015. Mr. Angelino applied for an in-law, but because it was two separate units at the time, he did not live there, didn't qualify as an in-law. It was suggested by Jacob Peabody, the associate or assistant planner at the time, as well as Veronica Asseline, the solicitor, as well as the board members, that Mr. Angelino withdraw his application for an in-law and apply for a two-family. Um, in order to have a two-family in that residential area, you are supposed to have a special use permit. Unfortunately, I wasn't in that position back at that time, so, unknown to me, it didn't get followed through. Uh, late last summer, approximately August, beginning of September 2020, an appraiser came in and informed me that it was a two-family dwelling unit. The only way you can access from one side of that house to the other is to go down through the basement. Um, that's the only way the two units are connected. So anyways, I looked at the file and realized that Mr. Angelino had never followed through with applying for a special use permit, so therefore it was what I felt an illegal two-family dwelling. I reached out to Mr. Angelino, as well as sent him a copy of the minutes, just to refresh his memory as to the direction that this should go in. Uh, Mr. Angelino reached out to me, explained some things about a septic system, um, so on and so forth. But again, that had nothing to do with what the issue was, which was, this was theoretically considered an illegal two-family home.
That's clear.
So we went, uh, you know, kind of back and forth. I explained to him he had to file for a special use permit to make it illegal to family, didn't qualify as an in-law, obviously, for the reasons I mentioned earlier, or he could convert it into a one-family. Um, my last contact with Mr. Angelino was 122320 via email, asking him for an update. Um, you know, it had been some time since I had heard from him, therefore not receiving your response. On January 19th of 2021, I issued a notice of violation for operating a two-family without the required permits. And that is where we are today. So today we are here on his appeal of my notice of violation.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to have you take a seat. Mr. Angelino, can you please come up to the podium? Okay, what the zoning enforcement officer stated is you are operating illegal two-family.
Okay.
Location. So I don't know what you want to do.
Oh, I guess then I got to apply for a duplex permit, is that what?
You'd have to have the septic all approved.
Well, I have the septic, it's good three chambers, the three bedrooms.
That doesn't mean nothing. You're going to have the two, he's going to have, Russ, am I correct?
I researched this, and this was already.
Plus you need all the construction, all the constructions going to have to be inspected.
I think, can we just circle back around? He's here tonight. The board is charged this evening to either uphold Kerry's decision.
I agree.
Or not, so, you know, when I'm talking about this, he's not, there's no special use permit on the board.
Correct. This is, this is an appeal of the zoning official's determination. And I understand Mr. Angelino wants to present a bunch of material about, um, about other things, but really the question before the board is whether to uphold, reverse, or dismiss the zoning officer's determination.
So is it your testimony that it is not a two-family, not being used as a two-family?
On, before we go any further, okay, I don't know how to look at the situation, okay? Under the Title 45 chapter of Rhode Island, you can have roommates, okay? So you can walk through the house from one end to the other, you can walk through doors, you can walk through the basement, and there's two people living there with two children. So I'm, I'm under the impression that that is not a two-family, it's two roommates. Now, if the board feels that that needs to be converted to a two-family, then I'm willing to comply. I researched the septic system, I researched everything else. I have everything from the first moment I bought the home, where it looked like a small shack. I took all these pictures here, and I developed so nice, I keep the property clean, and I'm a 20-year resident of Coventry, pay my taxes on time. I don't know what the board wants me to do. I'm here at your mercy. What do you want me to do?
So is it divided? The question is.
Well, it's, the thing is, this is the original home, okay? And the addition is here, so nothing was moved of the old home.
Are there two kitchens in this house, two full kitchens?
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to take the stove out and not make it a kitchen?
All right, sure, I'm going to have you take a seat.
There's two meters outside?
Okay, 2015, when I went up there, there was somebody renting it. All right, and that's, and then the evidence that Kerry went and looked at, it was on record. I'm going to open, I'm in an opinion to agree with Kerry's decision to uphold. Vote on to uphold Kerry's decision or to reject?
I second the motion to be brought up tonight.
Okay.
Well, we have to vote on it.
All those in agreement, we vote on this tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ahs. Okay, so, at this time here, I'd like to have a motion that either we uphold or reject the zoning enforcement's.
I make a motion we uphold Kerry's decision.
The zoning enforcement's.
Of his decision.
Second.
Okay, motion's made, second. Okay, now I'm going to do a real call for, uh... Keith, how do you vote on this?
Oppose.
Russ?
Oppose.
All right, Mike? Uh, Lenny?
Oppose.
Ed?
I also oppose.
So the zoning enforcement's decision is not called.
I have now my legal counsel question. So the decision has been upheld. The board is, and the zoning enforcement officer have the decision that he has a, so... How long does he have? Well...
So...
Here's what I'm afraid. We won't hear from him, you know, like, it's been six years since last time he gave you the board's word.
So obviously, we'll have a written decision at the next meeting, it'll be ratified. Um, I think between now and then, it would be appropriate for the zoning official, perhaps even the building official, to conduct a site visit of the property to confirm the status of that it isn't, you know, that it is still a two-family. And the applicant, without getting too far into the weeds, the applicant does have the option of either coming back to this board with a special use permit for a two-family dwelling at this property. He seems to have indicated that he doesn't want to do that, but again, that's, that's neither here nor there. Or if there are, in fact, as he acknowledged, two kitchens, then that house can be modified, the interior can be modified with the approval of the building official and the compliance by the zoning official to be the one-family house that the gentleman suggested that it, that it, that he wants it to be. And so I, I think that between now and the ratification, perhaps we can have a review by the zoning enforcement officer and the building official, and, and a report back to this, to this board at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
We have anything else? Any other business in front of the board?
That's all we have for business, a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I second it? Okay, made by Keith, seconded by Lenny, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, ahs. Thank you all for coming tonight.